...in order, and we are waiting for one council member to join us, but proceed and join in to say goodbye. So I will turn this over to City Manager.
Mayor Smith, members of the City Council, we appreciate your time this afternoon and to the members of our audience, we're grateful you being here. We seem to be well represented by our age-friendly committee, and we have one representative from our cultural affairs committee, and at present, no one from our parks and recreation. We did meet on April 10th, thus the date on this slide above, along with council member Cato Leirman and Wade, along with Elizabeth Howell, who's with us tonight, and Maria Poor, who is not with us at the moment, and then Kevin McDill had to counsel very last minute and was unable to join us that night. As we went through the meeting, we determined that the conclusion of that first meeting, that the very next step ought to come back to you and present our findings, which really are based on just what our current code says we are supposed to do, and then open it up for, you know, discussion with you or any of the audience at the discretion of the mayor and council. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. So the city code, section 2, 15130, lists the standing committees, which currently are three: Parks, Recreation and Libraries Advisory Committee, the Age Friendly Advisory Committee, and the Cultural Affairs and Arts Committee. And by definition within the code, it says, "A standing committee shall be formed by council comprised of Maricopa residents. Committees shall take directions from the City Council and city staff liaison for the purpose of studying, researching, and advising councils, council on topics of special interest." So the criteria for creation of a standing committee, based on the code, says, "The council may create a standing committee to study and review multiple dynamic issues of a common topic in order to advise and make recommendations to council in an open meeting. A standing committee is best suited when the following conditions are met: there are many related topics that are, that interact with each other; they are ongoing activities in the area creating dynamic shifts; council will benefit from in-depth and extended citizen input, and council will be requested to act in the future in regards to this issue; and the issue is of significant importance to a significant segment of residents." So I was very honest with the group when I spoke before, and that I'm not sure what half of that means, to be honest with you, and I'm not sure any of us can give good definition to what some of that means, you know, creating dynamic shifts and et cetera, et cetera, but it is clear that the committees stand for the purpose of fulfilling assignments given by the City Council. So the member responsibility is, "Members shall advise the council related to policy manners relevant to the scope of the given committee. Members shall act on behalf of the best interest of the city and shall maintain ongoing communication throughout their membership turn, term, and members shall select one of its members to serve as the chairman." Staff responsibility is, "City Maricopa staff member shall be designated as a staff liaison to each committee. The members will meet as determined by the staff liaison." Now why it's that way in the code, I have no idea. In my opinion, it ought to be at the discretion of the committee or the committee chair, and they should meet as needed. There is no requirement to meet every month, with one exception, and we'll get to that later, and then it says, "Members will meet a minimum of once a year for training with staff liaison," and of course, this was recently changed where now we're doing training twice a year with our committees. So the agenda process, "Agenda topics should reflect the needs of the council to gain greater knowledge and understanding on a topic, or to receive input on a topic in support of possible council action." So it's important to note that, the agenda is for the sole purpose of greater knowledge and understanding on a topic, or to receive input on a topic in support of a possible council action. Agenda topics may originate as a request from an individual council member to the mayor, by council direction in an open meeting setting, or as a recommendation from the staff liaison. Agenda topics will be communicated to the committee by the staff liaison. The staff liaison will prepare the agenda language, maintain topical relevance of each individual agenda item, transmit the finished agenda to the chair, and then to the city clerk in order to be posted in compliance with city procedure and the Arizona open meeting law. Meeting notes in the form of minutes shall be prepared by staff for approval by the committee and forwarded to the office of the city clerk. Actions will be posted on the city website. A single committee member who is designated by the chair may present a two-minute report to council on topics previously considered by the committee and which are included on the council agenda. The two-minute report shall include a summary of the scope of discussion, major questions or outcomes discussed, and formal action taken by the committee. So in breaking them down one by one now, the Cultural Affairs and Arts Advisory Committee is a seven-member committee that serves as an advisory group to the City of Maricopa City Council, forgive the typos. The committee's primary function is to provide support for activities, services, and events that promote the inclusion of arts and culture by providing a public forum for individuals and organizations to share information, identifying and recommending partnership opportunities that can leverage city communications and facility resources, providing feedback for public art display, policy and recognition, and providing annual feedback to city council on accomplishment and future goals. Parks and Recreation Committee reviews and makes recommendations on various projects and applications made to the city for legislative action by the city council. The members of this group play an important role in the development of the city. Each person has the opportunity to help formulate the initiatives and documents that guide the development of Maricopa. Now I have to be honest with you, that sounds more like the Planning and Zoning Commission to me than Parks and Recreation. I don't know what that means, to receive applications that will guide the important role of development in the city, and helping formulate the initiatives and documents that guide the development of Maricopa. It doesn't reference development of parks, or recreational activities, or anything to that distinction. Then our Age Friendly Committee, which is a little different than the rest, because this was formed by resolution, says that the role is to connect people 60 years and over with people of all ages in order to improve social interaction, decrease social isolation, and to increase awareness to services, social opportunities, and recreation. Resolution 1426, "Supporting a Maricopa Age Friendly, Maricopa Initiative." Section 1, "Development of an Age Friendly Initiative with a goal of connecting older adults with people of all generations and officer, and, I'm not sure what that means, officer opportunities, and offer opportunities to meaningfully participate in their community." Section 4, "Will conduct a community outreach and data analysis to identify priorities, to develop a business plan," which is an interesting choice of words, "to ensure long-term financial sustainability," which is an interesting choice of words, "to address priorities and implement a new program to connect older adults with people of all ages." So in essence, as you read through those, what we're doing now does not mirror the language of the codes at all. Some of these may have had some intent 10-plus years ago when they first came forward. Some of them, I'm not sure the objective was ever really articulated clearly, or what the purpose or role was, but I think over the years, we've kind of morphed into a, let's find something for them to do, and I think the committees are looking for something that they can put their teeth into and have a real meaningful opportunity to serve the community. So at the end of the day, the responsibility rests with the City Council to define what that role is. It appears in most cases that the committee's purpose is to serve a function, which is a set of goals or topics that you would give them. We did discuss in our previous meeting that perhaps this is something we should start tying to our futures planning every year, so that as we articulate certain goals, a component of those might could be assigned to committees that they can then work on. And we used a few examples, such as if we are meaningful in moving forward, the performing arts mini-stage and opportunities over at the police building, that might be something that they could function with, either in the planning stations, or in helping with operations thereafter, depending on what it might be. For the Age Friendly, certainly the Senior Expo is a big piece of that, perhaps maybe even tying it closer to the Lunch and Learns, those type of things. But at the end of the day, the committees need to be in a position that they can have, not just be there to say yea or no to staff at projects, because we have staff, we have our projects, and they shouldn't be a byproduct of that, they should have their own area. And as an example with the Senior Expo, you know, the committee, even though they're a committee of seven, can create ad hoc committees, go out and find the sponsors, go out and find the programs, go out and find those type of things, rather than, you know, staff doing that, and our role would be more about, you know, logistical support. So I think the intent today is for you to get some feedback from those in the audience, and I don't know that we're going to reach a solution today by any means, but to get input on what you'd like to see these committees do. I did want to mention on the Parks Rec and Libraries, that that's a little bit unique now, because Parks is with Public Works, Libraries with events, and Recreation is segregated, there are three different departments now. So I think the intent today is for you to discuss where it's at, where you'd like to see it go, garner additional public feedback, and decide if you want to keep them as is, which I would recommend against, morph them into a new role, and/or have they served their purpose, and move on. And that's all we have to offer tonight, and we'll turn it over to you, Mayor, for a discussion, and if you have any questions or input from staff, we're happy to help.
Perfect, thank you. So I'd like to do, we didn't have any speaker cards, but I thought still it might have something that you'd like to contribute, that you're hearing the City Manager's presentation, whether we have our audience's attention at this point? Yes, Ron?
Ron, can you push the button on the base of the microphone?
On the base of the speaker, Ron?
Even I can be trained. Thanks for the opportunity. I've been on Age Friendly now for two-plus years. When I first started, I went over to this definition, which is tied closely with Age Friendly Arizona, which is how everything started. So for the first two years, my thought was, we were trying to do things for intergenerational activities.
Ron, would you please speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because it's being videotaped as well.
Okay. So first two years, I was thinking we were working mainly on intergenerational activities, and the cards, Friday night cards and things like that, were some of those activities. We did try to do some different things. Part of the problem was that we need to engage people who are of other generations in the committee to have discussions, and when we meet at four o'clock in the afternoon, we really can't get those people necessarily to be with us. So that kind of never went anyplace. Then we start talking about, our role is really advisory, and the question was, "Advisory to whom?" And so it turned out, the best that we could do advisory was Expo. It was to do our Expo and see what we could do there. And that's worked pretty well, but then we were told we're going to move to two or four meetings a year, and it's awfully hard to get anything done when you're doing two or four, two or four meetings a year. The other thing I think which is really important in your consideration, and you hit on it when you talked about trying to help the staff with Expo, and doing ad hoc committees, and breaking it down a little bit more. I know there are people who want to do more with trying to get sponsors and such like that, but there's an example of where we can be helpful, and we're being used as sort of a staff function. But with only four meetings a year, it's almost impossible to engage in any other activities where we can make recommendations, and even if we advise the city in doing that, there's no staff to do anything about it. And so that's kind of where the confusion has been for me. And also, I love the idea of us actually taking direction from the City Council, but I've never heard anything, I never had an opportunity to do anything in two and a half years. So be honest with you, we feel like we're sitting there and not doing much and can't contribute much, and asking how we can move senior agenda items forward, it seems like it's going to come back to voluntary groups. I was told this by Mayor Price, that, you know, where we are right now in development, we're not going to move forward unless we have volunteers doing those things. Well, it's been very hard to get volunteer groups going. I'm in my third year of trying to get something to do some of that. I think we may be successful this year. But that's kind of where we are, we're twisted between. We are not allowed to do staff functions, we have to advise. If we advise, where's the staff going to be there to help? I mean, the 2017 planning had a whole section on age-friendly housing, and there's nobody on staff who knows anything about it. I got shut down trying to do a presentation to Planning and Development on that, because they said it wasn't true, any of that stuff. They hadn't read that section of the 2017 report. It was boilerplate. I recognized it from other places. So we're really traveling very fast, and not having enough time to catch up with 7,000-plus people who we think have needs. So whatever you do, don't lose us. Find us a way of being effective in helping you move the city in those directions. We have to do staff function for you because you don't have it. We have to provide advice. I'd like people to listen to it when I tried to do it, and I've done that three times. So that's kind of where I feel we are. That's how I feel we are, okay? So don't lose this, and, you know, if we're going to really represent Age Friendly Arizona as a city, then perhaps we have to think about what that means from a statewide and from MAG, from MAG's point of view. So, sorry it takes a while.
Thank you, Ron. I appreciate that, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Elizabeth?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to, to see the council here working. I was in the first meeting that we had that Ricky mentioned, and from, from what we read about the, on those slides that you had, a lot of it was just unintelligible. It was not, we, it hardly was put in words that could be understood by the general public. And where we are right now, Ron said, "We're only meeting four times a year." That's according to the city plan, and we don't, as a committee, we haven't had anything to do with that. It has been generated by the staff liaison that said, "We are going to four meetings a year," and there's no way around it. Ricky mentioned in our last meeting that as a committee chair, I should be able to call a meeting, and I tried, and I got shot down, because the entire committee hadn't voted on when we're going to meet next. And so there's certain things about the limitations of the committee that we need to be, we need to have clarified. And to me, this is an opportunity for you guys to clarify what it is we're really supposed to be doing and how we're supposed to go about doing it. The Info Expo is a great activity. It was started by a member of the City Council at that time, and so, and we've continued on with it, but since we've moved, since we moved out of Copper Sky and into the Senior Center, a lot of the things that the Age Friendly Committee was doing has been taken over by the, the staff at the Senior Center. Whether we get back into it, or whether they continue doing it, that would be totally up to you, you folks on the City Council, how involved we need to be in that. The, I guess that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
But thank you.
Yes. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thanks for doing this. You guys know me, I've been around for a while. I've had experience, direct experience with all three of these committees. What got me started was I was at a council meeting one night, and the city manager made a comment, "Our committees don't work." My first question to that was, "Why? Why aren't they working?" I've served with several of you on council, been committee liaison to all these committees, participated in the annual strategic planning session, and you always heard me bring up the role of the committees. It's the seven of you who direct what our committees do. It's also a recruiting tool. We've got a varied group of citizens with a wide range of expertise. They want to be involved, they want to have a voice, they want to be heard, they want to contribute, they want to give back, and that number continues to grow day in and day out. So one of the things that I'm hoping that you'll do is give us a to-do list. It's not for lack of wanting to get involved that we're struggling, it's that we need better direction from our City Council. We also need to have that link with the staff liaison to make sure that your directives are being carried out, and that our voices are being heard and getting back to you. I remember one of the things we did when I was on council was form committees and task force, committees, boards and commission task force, to kind of review where our committees were, what we wanted to do, future direction, that kind of thing. And the two things that came out of that was, one, the council staff liaison, which the committees had been asking for, and it worked very, very well. I've served with Nancy, I've served with Rich, I've served with Henry on those different committees, and, and it works. It's a conduit of communication. You're their eyes and ears, they're your eyes and ears. The other thing was to say that we need to do some training. I worked very closely with the city clerk at that time to put together a training manual. Because of the nuances of city government and how things work at a committee level, that's a key figure. The other thing is, it's a direct tie-in to what we say we do with the Maricopa Citizens' Leadership Academy. That's part of our recruiting tool. Everything we're talking about here also ties into priority number one, economic development. If you've got engaged, informed citizens that are out there doing the work that you guys direct us to do, seeking input from our fellow citizens, I'll give you a perfect example. This past Saturday, I was at Copa Cultural, and I overheard no less than three groups of people talking about, "Did you know that they're selling the ball fields?" And, and it's stuff like this that you guys deal with, staff deals with, the people at the phones deal with, day in and day out. Using our citizens and training them and keeping them informed and keeping them engaged is a win-win for everybody. We no longer have the Maricopa Ambassador Program. Hopefully, we'll see something like that come back, but every time you get a citizen engages somebody else, whether they're a new citizen, a returning citizen, a longtime citizen, a senior citizen, a member of the youth, it doesn't matter. It strengthens our city. It's better for our image. I just would like you guys to think about what it is that we can do. Oh, the other thing that came out of the commission task force was, once a year, every committee will make a presentation to council. Sorry, guys, I haven't seen that happen once, and I've been off council for four years. I was on for six. So I think that's important too, because the committees want you to know what they're doing. That doesn't preclude them from emailing you. I know when Nancy and I served on the Age Friendly Committee, we used to get emails almost once a month from the Age Friendly Committee saying, "Here's what we talked about, here's what we decided, here's what we'd like your permission to look into further." That helps both sides. So I think if you can keep some of the things that are working, tweak some of the things that need to be maybe improved on, or expanded, or better defined, I think that'll be a good outcome in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yep. If you don't have anything to add, that's perfectly fine, Joan. Come forward, though, hon.
Okay, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, that's okay.
But if all of you know, I was with the Age Friendly Committee from its beginning. Mayor Rose, at the time, brought on Reverend Arnold Jackson from MAG, because he felt the need that there was, felt the need for a committee to represent the senior population with programs and resources. So Reverend Jackson, myself, and Amy St. Peter from MAG, put together this program, which I have copies of, obviously, and we brought it before City Council, and it was approved. We had our first meeting in 2014, and at that time, we set up goals. We had three goals that was decided by the committee. It was a committee of seven at that time. There were three goals that we implemented, was transportation, medical information, those are just generalizing them. We brought in representatives from various organizations, from CARA, from Penale Hila Council for Seniors, United Hope, or something, I forgot, and we also brought in David Meestes, who provided transportation for us. And the committee at that time had goals. It had objectives. The meetings were progressive, we fulfilled our obligations, and I think now we need to get back to have some structure for the committee if it is going to work, and that's just my opinion. All of you know me as I'm with different organizations, as my husband says, "Don't put your hand up." But I've worked very closely with Penale Hila Council for Seniors. I worked as chair, vice chair, and I'm also on the executive committee, and with them, they brought more resources, programs, and continue to do so to this day. So that's really all I'm saying, is I think Age Friendly, like all of the committees, need to rethink, need to restructure, find out just what direction we're going in, work with all of you who have always worked with us. Very grateful for that, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Gee, if I would have prepared something, I would have been up here all night.
We appreciate it, thank you very much. Yeah. Yes, City Manager.
Mayor, a few follow-up comments. I think it's important, as I said earlier, I don't think the staff liaison should be the de facto committee chairman. The staff liaison is only there to help with logistical-type things. I really do think that the chairman of a committee should be able to call meetings as they deem necessary. I don't think a staff member has to be there to keep minutes, because that costs us extra money, as you know. They certainly have someone on their committee who can keep minutes and then be turned into the city clerk's office. They can meet once a month, once a week. If they're getting ready for an event, they need to meet more often, they meet more often. And some of those work meetings through ad hoc groups aren't even a public meeting in the sense that you have to have minutes kept and all that sort of thing. And I do agree that there should be a council liaison, not a staff liaison, with each committee, and frankly, there's three, maybe two of you, where you can work together, and if one has the miss, you still have the coverage, which could make that all happen. And then I think from there, it's really a matter of what we want to do, and I really don't think we want to do what someone else does for us already, you know, if the county or other have these services, but what's our objectives? And the objectives is laid out in the code, which frankly, I don't even know why it's in code. It ought to be as determined by the City Council annually through their futures planning process as a recommendation. So I think the code needs to be stripped and given more flexibility, and then I would hope, in my mind, that whoever's serving as this council liaison to the committees could have their own mini-futures planning, and figure out what those things are, and then bring it back to the whole of the group, and decide collectively what it is you want to do. Obviously, you know, we don't want to get so spread so thin that we try to do too much, but what are those things? And, you know, when you read, for instance, the resolution regarding senior friendly, wherever it was, anyway, it seems to be freezing up on me, it talks, it doesn't talk about most of the things that were discussed today, which still, you know, Senior Expo, that's not in there. It says things that you can get the community to do and make awareness of, but that, that's not a bad project, you know, the Senior Expo, but that needs to be the objective, and, you know, and then... And, you know, and then Ron's passion, of course, is about age-friendly housing, to make sure you have grab bars and access and handicap and all that sort of thing, which, you know, there's only so far you can go with codes. But if I could just give you a place to start thinking about it, you might want to consider picking the two that will serve on each one, and then those two, going back, sitting down with this committee individually, work out some plans based on the futures planning we've just done, and any new ideas they bring to the table, and then come back, present those collectively, and then let's tweak these codes to get them more user-friendly and more to where we can adopt annually what the goals and objectives are that they can go forward with. So, I just throw that out as a starting place to consider.
Thank you, City Manager. It's actually a little scary. I was headed down that same path of having different subcommittees work through this process for each of these different committees. I think that's definitely the easiest way to go about it, and I know that we have liaisons on various committees already, but we can also add to them for those that are interested. I'm happy to do that. I would like to hear, just generally, before we break and maybe head down that path, for the three council members that participated, what discussions did you hear during that meeting? Does it make sense to break up into basically three different committees with council liaison to talk about what those goals should be? So, I do want to hear from the three that participated. I do also want to say that I've been on city council eight years, and I've never known of a council member who's contributed an agenda item as a whole to the council and then approved it for a committee to take action on. That has not happened, to my knowledge, unless I'm missing something. So, that part of the code has totally been missed. And then, there's been, I know there's total confusion because there's been back and forth. Do we want the committee members to actually work and volunteer? Sometimes the answer was yes, sometimes the answer was no. Do they meet as needed, monthly, or two times or four times? So, there has been a lot of confusion. At one time, there was the idea, no events, concepts come out of the committee, and so now we're saying, "Well, maybe we should look at that." And so, there, I could see cause for a lot of confusion, and I look forward to bringing about clarity for that. So, given that, I know council member Learman, council member Gettle, and then who, Henry, council member Wade. If you guys could give us a sense for what you heard, what your thoughts were, and if breaking up into groups is reasonable idea for you.
I can start.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to thank council member Gettle for bringing this topic up so we can all take some time and discuss it, and I want to thank all our, our community members and volunteers here tonight who've worked hours and hours. So, thank you so much for your dedication to our community and representing these parts of our community. And I've heard a lot of mixed messages as well, Mayor, that you're referencing your call-in advisory committee, but we're also asking you to do work, which doesn't really make sense. And if you are doing work, how can you accomplish work in four meetings a year? So, there's just a lot of mixed messages, I think, kind of a lot of confusion, so it's good to, let's clarify, and so everybody can be productive. I do agree that these three committees, kind of summarizing into, summarizing into these three groups is a, is a good thing to do, and then we can create objectives and goals and be productive. So, that's where I'm at at this point, and I look forward to improving this process.
Very good. I think that if we do head in that direction, we have to make sure to work, I would assume we have to make sure to work closely with staff, because depending on what comes out of each committee, we have to make sure that there's bandwidth, if bandwidth is needed or...
Well, Council, if I can just address that. First off, we shouldn't ever ask the committees to do what staff is already by their job title being asked to do. So, otherwise, again, and we may be a little late this year, but frankly, we can catch up. When they come forward with, through the futures planning process of its sorts, then we decide, okay, like everything else, what resources are needed, whether it's staff time, or whether it's a small budget, or whatever those things might be, that can be articulated and then become part of the budget process as well. And again, I feel that staff's role is really, we're going to have this event, and I need to talk with the communications people, get the advertising out, and I'm going to need tables and chairs, so I need to talk with that, but I don't think we should run the events for them and ask them to just show up and be busy bees. I think they should plan it and find all that. Now, if they need some assistance, certainly will help, but I don't think everything's got to be cleared through staff. Ultimately, it's got to be cleared through you, who are the staff liaison that meets with them as they meet, and I just think that if we fully understand, and again, that's this year's objective. Next year's objective may change entirely. Senior expo may continue for the next 20 years, but other things may vary, because now they achieve that. Some of the things we know, like Ron said, that probably aren't going to work, is we're probably not going to get teenagers and seniors sit around and play cards together. I mean, great idea, but it's probably just not going to happen. I mean, I can't even get my grandkids to sit down with me unless it's, you know, ladders and shoots, so it's about it. So, you know, so, so I think we have to go through that process, and we do have enough flexibility in the budget, but I, and of course, we want to get things on the counter if it does end up being an event. And like we said, once we get the theater up, is someone going to run the gallery or, you know, I don't know. But let's just figure out what those things are, that's going to give them more that they, you know, I don't think they want to work 80 hours a week. I don't think they want to do that. Elizabeth, maybe. I think Peg's going to, Peg's going to limit it at 60, I'm quite sure. Yeah, you know, but I really think if we do that, because the problem, from where I see it, is staff's just trying to find filler, and staff's not very good at doing that. And it's really not our job.
I agree wholeheartedly with that. And for the members of the committee, sometimes their heart is in those elements, sometimes they're not, and if it's not, the heart's not there, then it's just not going to work.
And I think it's important to note, again, they may have seven on the committee, but if they have to reach out to seven times seven to fill an event and have different ad hoc committees, they can do that, and that involves other people now in certain products of the, of the process. Certainly, age friendly and the cultural affairs committee are the two that I think are the easiest to address. I think parks, recreational libraries, we have to look at that and see if it needs to be dissected a little bit. I don't know what to do with parks, you know, go up there, "Hey, you need to clean up the weeds?" I'm not sure. So, let's figure what that is. Libraries certainly maybe has more of a connotation, connotation to it, including some events that can happen at the library, but, and so, that's where I think we ought to begin, if the council concurs, and let that feedback come back. And again, we do have enough flexibility, even though we may adopt the budget here in another month, that if you want to reassign a few dollars or, or some other things, I think we could do that.
You know, one of the reasons why I've observed, or I observed why age friendly was so successful, and has been successful with the program that they brought forward, is they had individual tasks to help put it together. And talking about Reverend Jackson, when Reverend Jackson was working along with council member, former council member Chapitals, there was a connection between what was expected and who was going to do it. And I thought that was, that's why I believe that the age friendly program has been successful, because it had a really good foundation to work from, and then dedicated people, dedicated people to do it. The other thing that was always a concern, I think, from some of the committees, and they may or may not have articulated it, was what were the resources for them to do the things? Even though that there's staff taking on the responsibility of providing whatever may be, like chairs and having access to the different program or different venues that we have in order for them to conduct their programs. If that doesn't, if that staff doesn't work, then that program really doesn't work either. It's hard to get people to move in that direction. Look at how many people we have here now, and it's the people who have been a part of the successful programs because they put their, they've dedicated their time and effort to it, and that's not what we're getting for the community as a whole. Is it because we're not articulating well enough with the community as a whole that they understand what the needs are, understand what their roles may be? I think so, because even we need it to have some clarification based on what... So, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking towards foundation, what, how we, how we start it. And one of the things, one of the other things that is important, as I said, in terms of the financial resources, in order to provide for speakers or activities or venues, whatever it is that we need to bring those resources to them, to my knowledge, and I may be wrong, but we haven't really feathered or feathered that, or filled that out yet. Are we, in fact, going to provide assets, resources to the committees in some type of, some type of stipend or whatever? Or are we expecting them to go out and generate their own funds, generate their own assets to go towards the program, and that works if everybody's in line?
What I heard, council member Wade, was that if we get, if we take it from here today to the next step, we would break into these groups, not today, and those liaisons that are working with that group would help define what the goals are, and if those goals need resources and/or funds, we would pull that into the current budgeting phase, or even if it is slightly after, we'd figure out how to make that happen. And if there aren't the resources or the funds to make that happen this year, it could definitely be taken in consideration earlier next year. But yeah, so that's what I've heard. Did I hear that correctly?
Correct. And council member Wade, I think the goal is always, you know, try to go out and get sponsors and get donations and those type of things, but sometimes there's just basic seed money or operations money that may be needed, I don't know. That's part of the process we would go through. And then, I don't want to speak for the mayor, but she and I spoke some time ago about, you know, these committees frankly work for and on behalf of the city council, and maybe there should be a, a single staff person who can coordinate, and we even spoke about a particular individual, so I won't get into that ahead of you, Mayor, who might could be, you know, more of the coordinator liaison rather than the various staff members that, you know, who already works for and directly for the city council. And so, that's something you can explore as a council as well, as a part of possibly, possibly there's enough, you know, room for that to happen with existing personnel, maybe not, but that's, so Mayor, I'll leave it to you if you want to carry that further now or later.
One thing, just, excuse me, just one thing in particular that's kind of unique to the cultural arts committee, you know, the possibilities of activities is so vast and ranging, and we separate art from culture, try to produce an activity that answers the needs of both of those and others that come into cultural arts, cultural arts, you are dealing with one group of people in one aspect of cultural arts, and you're dealing with another group of people who may be talking about culture, and what does culture mean? So, for me, with cultural arts committee, cultural arts, that was the term that I brought to the city, cultural arts committee, based on cultural affairs. And the reason why I presented that was to show that it focused mostly on the culture. That's what I was trying to accomplish with the cultural arts festival, or cultural arts is a focus on the culture. It kind of twisted in a different direction and concentrated more on the arts than on culture. So, I don't know if that means that we need a separate entity for culture and one for arts. I don't know if we need to have a definition, more defined definition, what arts means, but I think that that, there was, there was a shift along the way that kind of got in the way, if you will.
Well, going back to the current definition, it says, "Provide support for," not run them, not do them, but support for. And of course, the number of arts and cultural groups we have in our community today far exceed what was here 10 years ago. And, you know, and it could be, you know, just how do we support those organic, homegrown groups out there to, to do what they do, because the last thing we want to do is tell them not to do it, "We're going to do it all for you." That would be terrible for the city. We want the community to, to make those decisions and to grow what they feel is important, and frankly, if the community doesn't feel as important, then we have to ask ourselves, "Should we be doing it?" But as an example, and this is just one example that may not make any sense whatsoever, but we talked about, you know, if we have this gallery over here in this new facility, and we allow local artists to either display or show their wares, but maybe they're even for sale, and if they're for sale, it generates a little commission, not on, you know, not in lieu of the artist fee, but on top of it, because just like you would have it in a showroom somewhere else, those fees then could go in to support a grant program, to support grant applications from different groups in the community that the committee can then review and submit back a recommendation to the city council. That's just one example that may not make any sense, but those are some ways in which you can generate some funds to help promote other local venues and activities and things, because at the end of the day, if the city's going to do well, if you look at all the other cities in Maricopa, most of the venues and all that support the arts and cultural affairs are not city-owned. Most of them are 401(c)(3)'s, and some are, but not all, school systems, all those type of things. So, I think it's, again, it starts with what is it you want to achieve, and if it's, we want to do it all for everyone, I would hope that's not the case. If ours is to figure out how to support the community to grow organically in support of these type of things, then I think that's probably a better answer.
I think if my memory serves me correct, and if I'm incorrect, someone, please help me out, but I understand what you're saying in regards to cultural affairs and arts and arts being the predominant, but I think that's because we merged two committees. Arts was standing on its own, and then cultural affairs joined the arts advisory committee, and maybe it didn't blend as well initially, but I think this is a great opportunity for them to set goals as a committee and figure out how to blend those even better than they're currently blended. Yeah. Council member Gettle, oh, yes, council member Learman.
I also heard council member Wade talk about how, when the Reverend was here, he really provided vision and passion and direction and guidance for the group, and they were, and that really helped them be effective, and what I'm hearing the city manager say is, "That should really come from us, that we should be the ones in our future planning meetings, providing that passion and excitement and guidance and direction so that the committees get really excited, and they're like, 'Oh, gosh, this is what we're going to do.'" And that's what I think we're all saying and, and holding ourselves accountable, that we haven't really done that. And moving forward, that's one of the purposes of the future planning meeting, is that we need to take on that task and become that visionary force.
That's a really good point, because I know these folks that are in the audience have a passion for a lot of different things, and they have ideas in terms of what they would like to see their particular committee get involved with. And so, I don't think we need anyone to feed them with what they need to be thinking about. They have their own ideas, as do, does the city council, so, good comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you also, our concerned citizens that are here tonight, and appreciate the feedback and the, the input. I think everything has been expressed really eloquently as far as what I wanted to make sure was discussed tonight. I may just throw out just a couple of cautions out here, is I think, as council member Learman mentioned, if, if we as council don't have a clear vision, then that's not going to translate well into our committees, and we're going to be back where we are today in just another year or two. And so, I think we really do need to be sure that we're all on the same page, that these committees are important, not just because of what they bring to our city, but they're our, they're our future leaders of the city, and it's a great training ground and recruitment tool, and you have 100 minds versus seven minds, we're always going to come up with a better product than just us seven figuring it out on our own. So, we, these councils, these committees are crucial in that development of our city, I feel. Second caution I might throw out here, too, is that we want to be clear that our, our committees aren't necessarily driving the force. You know, we, we have some concerns perhaps of staffing time and having these amazing projects be thought about, but then how do we actually make that materialize? And what are the resources of the city's going to be to bear to those? I think it needs to go the other way. I think we need to help with that initial setting of that vision and give them some very specific tasks. very specific tasks and opportunities to think outside the box and to look for other solutions, and to come up with some of their ideas. But then together, we have to be united in that direction before we give direction to staff. I don't think it's appropriate for us to come up with 300 new projects, 200 new events, and now Ricky's looking at us like, "Okay, we need to hire 400 more people to be able to make all of this happen." So, as long as we have a clear vision, we let council, sorry, we let our committees run with that clear vision, then we can counsel together on how to make that happen. So, I think that's an important step that needs to be there. So, I agree wholeheartedly with our city manager's recommendation that we start looking at our code and tweaking those. I do believe we need to empower our chairs a lot more to be able to determine and to dictate how often and when and how they meet. I think staff can help us with that, and also the training aspect of it as well. We have two times a year now. We need to make sure that our, our citizens that are serving understand our, our open meeting laws, understand how to, to move an item off of an agenda or, or to make things happen, and so that could be very, very helpful for them. Finally, I would also propose, and it's been said here tonight, that that futures planning session will be key, and perhaps we could even get it onto the calendar, an additional council work session, or however it's going to look, I'm not sure yet, of where we can come up with, what is the, the next step for our committees to start looking at? What did we hear from staff that we really enjoy, that we really like, that we really want to move forward? And then how do we involve our citizens in that project? And so that might be an additional step that we as council might need to do, either in a work session or an open council meeting. Those would be some of my recommendations. So, again, just thank you, everybody that shared tonight, and I, I do believe we're in the right step. I do not think that we need to, to do away with any of our committees. I think that they all have much value to offer to our city, and we can give them some great direction to move forward. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Gero, so, and we can talk a little bit about this, but just brainstorming in my mind, it seems that if we break into a group in terms of trying to understand what each group wants to do, and we have two, hopefully two council members per group, that to get it started, hearing what they have to say, hearing what the council members have to say, and then obviously bringing each of those groups to the whole council and understanding and kind of getting direction from there, after working with the city manager to make sure we're able to move forward with those. I kind of envision that happening every year, about, I don't know, October, November timeframe, that the, the committee would get into their planning stage, knowing that the futures meeting is in January, February timeframe, and that they have to be prepared for that. And, so is that kind of what you're envisioning as well?
I, I think so too. I, again, my caution is that we don't necessarily need to overburden the resources of the city.
Totally, totally agree.
I totally agree. I believe that the city staff can definitely approach us with their vision of moving the city forward, and that's all appropriate in our futures meeting. Maybe on that same track, as if I'm hearing you say, we also have our citizen committees involved, presenting and putting forth their visions, and then we somehow merge those two into what we present to the whole city and we move forward with.
A little bit of interaction probably before the futures meeting, to make sure.
Well, I, I would hope as we go through the futures meeting, those of you who serve on these committees as a liaison would be able to provide input at the futures meeting. But, you know, we did this in early February, and of course, we don't adopt the budget until June, so we have time. And, and in the futures meeting, I think after that's concluded, then you would go back to your committees and say, "Okay, we're going to do X, Y, and Z, and we want you to not do X, Y, and Z, but there's a part of X we need you to do, a little piece of Z and nothing of Y." And then we figure that out, and that becomes their goal and objective for the next fiscal year, and then we go from there. Does that, I think that's what you're saying, Councilmember.
But it starts with a meeting in the October, November timeframe with that committee and the liaisons to kind of gather joint ideas, I would think.
I, I think that's fine, you know, because there may be some additional ideas that would come to futures planning that, you know, you would bring on behalf of the committees, or if you wanted to set aside, I don't think, you know, as you know, it's a long day already, but if you wanted to set aside, you know, 45 minutes to have the three committees come and present, just like staff presents at the, the futures planning, you know, if that works, and take 20 minutes each, because we're, we're just trying to get the idea on the table, right, at that point? And then you can digest it, and bottom line, you got seven of you that say, "Yeah, I like it," or "No, I'm not, don't like it," or "Maybe," right? And then that gives some additional feedback to go back to the, to the full committees and work out those details, so.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Vidal.
So, yes, the input of our committees is very, is, is super important. I do like that idea. Now, if I was in the liaison for arts, they'd be in big trouble, and I would like to hear from the people from the arts to give me some focus, to help me understand what they think and what I can help them with, whether it's staff, my time, whoever's time. Same with age-friendly. I've been working with these lovely people for five years now, and their vision is way different than mine. Thank God it's their vision. They have put their heart and soul into this. They have really led the senior dance. I thought that was amazing. I thought the, just everything that they put their heart and soul into turns out to turn out to be like gold. So, that particular committee is near and dear to my heart, and they've taught me, if I had to teach them, we may be in trouble with our age-friendly group. So, I listen to what they have to say. So, all the committees, I think the people that were picked to be put on those are the heart and soul, and their input to me is tremendous. So, definitely I feel that way, whether it's October, November, whatever the timeframe is. I love the idea that maybe it's, you know, each committee comes, meets with whoever the liaisons are for, you know, 30, whatever the number is, and give us the ideas, so that way maybe we can help tweak the ideas to help them figure them out and give some input, because I know Nancy has a lot of arts, I know Amber has a lot of arts.
Not talents, just love.
Love. But if you asked me for arts, we'd all be looking at Nagels, and that's not a good thing, okay? But my point being is, I want to hear from them. The other thing is, I know we had a couple show up late, and if you don't mind, Mayor, they had something to say for a minute or two, that would be great, because they did take the time, they thought it was 6 o'clock, not 5 o'clock. We all make mistakes, but if you don't mind if they had a minute or two, if they care to speak.
We came for the planning and zoning, but obviously that's not.
Okay. That's not tonight, yeah. Um, let me finish with the council members, please. Okay, Councilmember Marsh.
I think that you've kind of zeroed in on a philosophy of running a business that Jack Welch taught Bill Gates 15, 20 years ago, as the rhythm of the business, where you set an annual calendar that provides for market inputs to come in from your customers, in this case, it'd be our residents. You do an analysis of the situation, the current situation, and how it's changed in the past year, and you analyze the situation, the problems, and the holes, the things that need to be filled. Then you design projects to meet those needs. Then you assign people to execute those projects, one-time projects or sustained projects that happen every year. And then you give an annual report of the results after the projects have been completed and fielded and exercised. The, the age-friendly committee came up with some great projects over the past few years. Joan brought in the expo and made that into a roaring success that runs every year. Elizabeth brought in the, the project with shredding, the shred, annual shred-a-thon, you know? And, and that, that has grown every year and been successful, multifaceted project. And the, a whole bunch of us got the senior center going, and we now have bricks and mortar, and we have a sustained effort there with many sub-projects going on, like lunch and learn and, and card games and exercise programs. I think if we set up an annual calendar that fits in with the city's annual planning cycle, so that the committees can get their inputs in early in the, in the vision cycle, so that we can analyze the, the situation, and then design projects to meet those needs and execute those projects, we can get this thing going annually that will sustain itself and will set us at a speed that's greater than Casagrand's speed of evolution. It'll keep us ahead of them, ahead of Chandler, ahead of Gilbert, Mesa, Tempe, Buckeye, and enable us to evolve this city quickly and rapidly and efficiently. So, yeah, I think we're on a good path right now.
Very good. Elizabeth, did you have a word, quickly?
Currently, the age-friendly committee has no vision statement. We don't have any goals. We have objectives that are like 15 years old, and that's what we've been functioning on, and that's all we've got. So, if you can come up with something to help us with a vision or, or, or goal statement, that would be great. And then we can figure out the mission and objectives.
Yeah, I actually see the liaisons that are assigned to age-friendly and every other committee, working with the committee members to figure out what that vision should be jointly and bringing it forward.
That would be great.
Yep. I mean, I see this as an empowering opportunity for the chairman to come meetings when necessary, for the committee to know that their future plan, obviously it requires a little bit of work with the city, city council, to make sure that the resources, whatever they might be, are there. You know, we do have to probably, in many cases, start small, and I don't know what it grows to, but I think being cautious and careful, but with passion, developing what the vision is, the goals are, I see it as an empowering opportunity. Yes, Councilmember Ghetto? Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Elizabeth. I wholeheartedly agree, Mayor. I know this isn't necessarily a decision we can make perhaps tonight, but I would love to maybe have the council divided among those three committees, and to learn who those liaisons could be and sort of, you know, some plans moving forward.
Are you all comfortable with us doing that now? Yes, Councilmember Lerman.
City manager, did you want to talk about the vision statement part?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I, I just, if I could add another caution, that, you know, there can only be one vision statement for the city, and we have one, and we have our four objectives. So, whatever the committees do should fall in line with these, or they shouldn't be doing them, just like any department or anyone else shouldn't be doing them. There's only one brand, and that's the city. We certainly want to elevate and give credit to the committees by name when they do functions. So, it's, you know, it's a city event or program sponsored by or brought to you by whatever the committee is, but I just want to indicate that we don't want more logos and those type of things, we need to stick to just the one.
I totally agree. Yes, Councilmember Lerman.
I agree with Bob that this really creates a, a calendar, and it creates predictability, and it creates a rhythm. And if all the committees understand this is how it works, I agree, I think our productivity is going to grow immensely. I did have a question. What is the goal of having two council members per committee versus one? I'm not understanding that.
I don't know that it has, I mean, in my thinking, I don't know that it has to continue that way, but I think to get started, just for these initial meetings, it might be valuable. What are your, what are your thoughts?
It's also wise to have people from different election cycles, so that you've got continuity over the election boundaries.
I like two, because again, two heads are better than one. I know, like Bob and I are both on age-friendly, and although we're a few years older, seniors, what they need, what their needs are, opposed to somebody like me. I'm more of a hands-on, I can help, I can lift, break my back, dump garbage, do whatever it takes, but I just feel two heads are better than one, especially, age-friendly is near and dear to my heart for all the years that I've been on it, and I love working with them, and I think it's exciting. Plus, if somebody gets sick, somebody can't attend, you always have somebody as a backup. That's my two cents on one versus.
Ghetto.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would, I would add that I believe the redundancy is helpful, just to have a backup. I don't know that we both need to always attend every committee meeting, but if there's communication, and as long as we have coverage there, and we're talking back and forth about those agenda items, I think that'd be sufficient.
Okay, very good. So, are you all comfortable with determining who's going to help split into what groups to get this going? Because so far, so far I know that Vice Mayor Vidallo and Councilmember Marsh are already on the age-friendly, and so I think that works great to continue that. Councilmember Lerman, you're on the cultural affairs and arts, and are you on another? Okay. And just catching, who else, are you on the Parks, Rec, and Library? Yes, okay. Do you want to continue on that? Okay. So, that leaves me to ask, and I know that sometimes your jobs may interfere, so please, you know, feel free to say, "It depends what the meetings are," or something to that. But if you have an interest, what would your interest?
It'd be the cultural arts. If it was the last one, it's a cultural arts.
I might have to challenge Councilmember Wade to an arm wrestle for the cultural arts, but, no, I would love to serve on the, on the Parks and Rec as well, so.
Okay.
If that's where we have our opening.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I may add, being a liaison in my mind doesn't mean you attend every single meeting. It just means you're the liaison. When they have questions, need help, look for guidance, they can call you. If you want to go every meeting, it's up to you, but I, I think the committees can mostly act independently, and you guys communicate as you deem appropriate. So, I, I guess, because it take a lot of time, in particular times of the year, so.
City manager, that leaves Councilmember Manfredi and myself. Is it appropriate, not appropriate, but will it help if we work with you to look at the city code and kind of get a start on that? Or do you feel like it's dependent on what these committees come up with?
Oh, I think we can get started. Actually, if you don't mind, I'll just start working with Tina, and then we'll do some immediate drafts and get it back to you, Mayor and council, and go from there. And we may tweak it more as more definition comes, but I certainly think there's some things that we should get rid of, and frankly, nothing else. I think we should eliminate the code, with the exception of the fact that we do have the three standing committees, and then rewrite it as we, let's get the junk out of the way, because right now, that is the code. Let's get the junk out of the way, let's go clean with three committees, and put in the language that we've agreed to, and then we can define it as we go. But I think the greater the flexibility, the better.
Okay, great. If we, if myself and Councilmember Manfredi can be of help, let us know. But I will ask Councilmember Manfredi if he would like to join in on any of these three you guys are, yeah, okay, perfect. All right, so I think we have a direction. That pretty much means that if our liaisons will work with the chairman to organize the first meeting, to start this process and get it understood in regards to each committee, that would help with the organization of the calendar and taking that pressure off the staff. Is that okay?
Yes, and one more thing I, I can mention is, you know, a monthly standing committee is easy to schedule for use of buildings and such. If we get a call on a Tuesday saying, "We'd like to meet tomorrow," that may be tougher.
Okay.
But if it's part of a ad hoc, and we'll have to get with Tina to figure out what, if anything, we can do where it's less formal at times, where they could meet at a home or wherever makes the sense for them. But that's the main thing, is, you know, we want them to meet when they want to meet, but sometimes it's impossible to, or sorry, there's just no room available or whatever, so.
So, is there any problem at this point, council meeting with the chair of each committee and moving forward with?
No.
Okay. Is there a chair for cultural arts and affair, uh, cultural affairs and arts? Pardon me? Not at the moment, okay. How'd I make that happen? Okay. Peg, do you have a comment?
Just want to offer one more food for thought. You guys have heard me say, "Connect the dots." We got a lot of dots in this room. So, I think what I've been hearing is, a lot of what the committee's expectations are is supporting, promoting, marketing. We also need to connect with the nonprofits and other organizations that we individually and collectively represent in this room, and that might be an opportunity in and of itself of some public-private partnership. itself of some public-private partnerships. The Historical Society's doing amazing things, Friends of the Library, Maricopa Seniors, the Copa Advocates, there's a lot of groups that are represented that we can kind of touch base with them as an extension of council and say, "How do we work together?" So I just wanted to offer that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, any further comments, questions, concerns?
Well, the one training year will be as indicated, what is the rules of conduct or Robert's rules, or verified Robert's rules, what can they do, not do, when they're a formal committee? You know, they can't meet unless it's publicly noticed, those type of things, unless it's some ad hoc portion where one or two members meet with other volunteers on a particular assignment. So part of that's just that rules, which I think should probably happen once a year right after any new selections, so after, you know, elections and so forth. I think the other training is really about staying focused on what the mission is as defined, and that's why we have the mission statement for the city. If it doesn't meet any of those objectives, don't do it. So, and that, I think that would flow back to all our committees, too. So those are the two areas, but, you know, at the end of the day, the committees may have some ideas on what they'd like to see as well.
Any other comments, questions? Yes.
I know that we had spoken in the past about the leadership attack. Up with an answer? Choose whether their liaison, their picks, train. We spoke about it, but I don't know if we.
No, the consensus of the council was to let each council member decide. You're certainly welcome to change that, but as of now, it's each council member would self-determine that.
Any other questions, comments? And, Bob, um, excuse me.
Yeah, there's, there's been. One term that's been mentioned a lot lately was the Maricopa Advocates Program, the ambassadors program. I'm wondering if we can bring that back as a topic for discussion in a future meeting, maybe get that going again. I think we've got a lot, a lot going on with MIDA that can be complemented with an advocates, an ambassadors program.
I'll have, for me, I'll have to ponder that. Anyone else? Think about it? Pondering? Right? Thank you for that. Talk about it more in the future. City manager, would you have any closing comments or thoughts or concerns?
Just thank you for the energy tonight, and I think this will get us a long ways down the road, and I think, you know, we got so wrapped up in process and not results, and now I think we're focusing on results, and I think that'd be good for everybody.
Very good. All right, Mayor.
Yes.
I know I've said this.
Just right before.
I know I've said this a few times, but I know we've talked about inviting youth to participate in these committees, and so I just want to keep bringing that up again. And I know Councilmember Wade works with our youth council, but just continuing to invite a youth to participate on these committees, because it's a huge opportunity for learning and growth and leadership, so just keep thinking about that, ways that we can do that.
My memory is that the majority of council supported that idea.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we incorporated it into the code yet.
No, I think part of it was because we wanted to get the committees redefined first, so they wouldn't come out and say, "What's this going on?"
Yeah.
Have a defined role for them. I do think it's a good thing, and I think Councilmember Wade makes a good point that, you know, his youth council is also a great resource to help these committees fulfill their objectives if they need manpower or staffing or other things to help with their events, you know, like the shred-a-thon and some of those others for, so it's, they need to know that that resource is there.
Very good. All right, last call. This meeting is adjourned.